Glad to be the stewardess of the United States of America and to be part of the rubbish hands of a nation under God in this law. But we really don't trust our own.
All right, thank you. Any subtraction from contested agenda? Motion to approve the contested agenda?
Oh, second.
Okay, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Okay, presentation tonight from the animal control. Here you go.
Wait, he's sitting here or?
Yeah.
Sure. Oh, he was sitting here. You've got to imagine everything. Definitely, yeah.
I avoided myself. I'm already back.
You don't have the stripes.
Um, I'm not sure what you need to know. You have a package for it, yeah, I think. And, um, well, I'll tell you a little bit about myself first. Twenty-one-year veteran of the Minnesota County Sheriff's Department. I retired in 2007. Uh, from the jail division, twenty-one-year operating large jail block facility in the state of Minnesota, probably by a state or a state. Good big place. So that's my background and experience with that. Um, I've been dealing with dogs most of my life. Um, I have a girlfriend that operates at Borden Hill in Anover. And, uh, together we kind of run that place. We started doing animal control, it was kind of, uh, kind of fell into it. Um, there was a lady farther up north, Marlene, I can't remember her last name. Uh, she was doing it and all of a sudden she couldn't do it any longer. So Anover came right to us and said, hey, look, we've got the facility and we've got the hotel, would you like to do this for us? Okay, sure. But, uh, then we got Al in Oak Grove and, uh, we got Frigley and Charlie Hart and Pauline and we'd like to have a business.
Do you have enough time to do one more city? You'll have enough time?
Well, sure.
Do you have one more city?
Dog stuff isn't, isn't all that kind of incident. Uh, most of it's running back and forth. Like, now you want to be over here on my place and just a little longer, 25 minutes? I would say I could guarantee the response time within 45. Uh, depending upon where I am, it might be an hour, but 45 to an hour would be average.
Good.
And I don't know how you guys are watching, but I don't know how you've, uh, I don't know what you were doing before.
Elizabeth, what, do you have a couple different things going?
So, um, several years ago, we had a gentleman pick up on demand service. And when we're in Rosika, um, decided to go on their way in the animal control business, we contracted for Hillcrest at Hillcrest Animal Hospital just for impound services. So on page eight, she has the letter that put us on notice that they will involve them by impound services and they're going in and they're rushing. And so, um, the first contact is five minutes. So we're, um, animal impound services, what we're doing tonight, looking at your presentation, they have two options. One is an impound only service and then an impound with pickup on demand. So it's really what the council wants to provide. Um, today, we, what we ended up doing is we have a CSO in the ground for Hillcrest. And I think we still would provide that, but it doesn't, there isn't a response of the noise. We have a legal CSO to be available to bring to Hillcrest. It's not something that might be four hours, maybe a day before they can tram forward. So in this particular case, I think with your service, you do have a response time, Michael says. So it really is what the council wants to provide for services. Is there a hundred or dogs though?
I would say probably eight to 10 dogs a month if that.
Eight? That many?
That can't be right.
For pickup?
Really?
You mean they're like lost and they, you pick them up or?
We get a fair amount of calls, you know, especially, maybe not in the winter months, but in the summer months.
So these are stray dogs?
I wouldn't say stray dogs, maybe lost dogs.
Lost dogs.
Yeah, we always kind of think in terms of lost dog. Because a lot of times, dogs do what they want to do sometimes. They're going to be dogs, they're going to follow the dogs and go where it goes. And sometimes they get into trouble. Uh, what he's working on is, we'd rather treat it as a lost dog situation than a stray dog situation, and we'd rather try to educate people and do better than owners who keep in control of their pets, rather than trying to be punitive and say, okay, you're going to pay me a fine or you're going to take it or whatever. Now, I'll do whatever the council would like me to do. We've got a lot of flexibility, we're easy to work with. Uh, you can spray like parts lots, we can collect the $50 impound fee for their city just because. So I do that for them and send them that $50 check for every dog I pick up. But, uh, I get paid on the owner's side. Cities don't pay me unless the dog goes unclaimed. And if the dog goes unclaimed, the charges are pretty nominal. And I would charge for pickup fee during business hours, 20 bucks. Um, I would charge, um, daily boarding, uh, fee of 28 a day to a max of five regular business days that I'm open. And my hours are Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And then Saturday night noon. But, you know, in that five-day period, when it expires, then that's when we have to start looking for new open dogs. And that's what we do.
So how do you do that? Do you work with, um?
I have a particular rescue that I work with. I'm working with, uh, Reston Pets, our wonderful John Pauline. A good lady that directs that program is named Liz Giegler. She's got a really good reputation as a rescue community. And we just deal with her. Uh, we found that it's easier for us to donate those dogs back to, um, back to someone else that wants to have them if they're unclaimed. And then the, the city picks up the tab for whatever the boarding max was. And I don't get any money from Liz. Liz gets the dogs for free. We don't charge her for it.
So you have a chip reader? They carry with you?
Absolutely. Yep, we have chip reader. Um, we are going to buy another one so that we can do it mobile. Uh, we're outfitting my vehicle right now with a computer mount so I can have my laptop with me. And we'll do, we'll be able to ID animals on site. And that'll save a lot of.
Would you just bring them back to that address if possible at that point?
Yeah, if I could return them, I would. And I'd be able to take a nominal fee for just the pickup charge. So I would charge is 20, 30 bucks, depends on what time it is.
Hmm.
And I, I won't, we're not boarding it, so I wouldn't charge any impound fee.
Would you charge the city or the owner?
No, I'll charge the owner. If I can return it to the owner, the owner pays.
Yeah.
They pay everything. As far as, as far as everything goes, um, the citizen will pay a $35 impound fee for the first 24 hours and then $28 a day for each part of the calendar day thereafter. Uh, so it's kind of like the car impound. You pay a fee when the car goes in, you pay them every day after 24 hours.
Okay.
It's pretty cheap. Um, I know some of our, some of our competitors charge quite a bit. Um, I know of one that actually charges a $250 to $300 a month retainer fee before they even touch a dog. They get paid that money every month whether they handle the dog or not, and I don't think that's right. Um, I'm not in this business to make money. We're a nonprofit organization split off from a for-profit business.
Hmm.
Um, we don't make any money. Any money we do make, we're putting it back into the community in ways like we offer a domestic abuse program for, uh, boarding pets, uh, victims of domestic abuse. A lot of times, uh, there are people who are fearful of leaving a dangerous situation, leaving their pet behind. And sometimes they can't bring them with. If that's the case, some people would rather stay in that situation than leave their pet behind. So we step in and we'll take care of that. We also offer some financial assistance for people that are at risk of losing animals because of financial considerations. Uh, qualified individuals could get some assistance with, for example, if I, if I have someone come to me and they can demonstrate a hardship, you know, I'll, I'll work with them. I'm not going to keep their dog. I don't want to keep their dog. You know, it's, the whole thing for us is getting the dog back to the owner where it belongs and then getting that owner to voluntarily comply with the city ordinance. And now, if you have problems with people, I'll definitely bring them up to your attention. I think in Anover now then, in Oak Grove last year, I had two repeat offenders. Did you get a copy of my annual report too?
Not the annual report, you sent me the, um, service fees and rates.
Okay. Um, I'll get you a copy of the annual report too, just for, just for reading pleasure. But, yeah, we had only a couple of repeat offenders. Have we been doing it for, since 2014, 15?
So Elizabeth, we just have an issue with dogs. We don't do cats or goats or pigeons or, I mean?
Yeah, we've only, we've only had, we've only ever had services for, for dogs. And the other service that we would, um, need assistance with is, um, we do require kennel inspections for all of our kennel licenses. And we do that, um, I don't remember whether it's every three years or five years, but I do know that an inspection is required. And we do have about a dozen kennels, um, that are staggered.
You could be an authority and know what's working there for us?
Absolutely. I'll do whatever authority you give me, I will use it.
Okay.
And I will do what I need to do for you guys. I work for you. I'm easy to work with. Anybody can call me anytime direct. You'll have my cell phone number and you'll be able to get ahold of me 24 hours a day.
So what, what about, well, Columbus, about, um, wild animal issues?
Oh, wildlife?
Yeah, that, that's nothing you guys get.
Not, not so much. We are in the process of trying to get a, uh, a two-story horse trailer so we might be able to do some equine work if that ever came up. Uh, I know that, uh, now then in Oak Grove, we've had, we've had some issues with some stray cattle and goats and horses. So we've done that before.
You guys ever go out on any of, that's probably more, uh, like animal abuse type stuff?
Animal abuse.
Like horses?
We don't investigate, but what we can do is we can use our knowledge of, of the animal laws to help people, uh, generate a complaint that will actually hold a little bit of water and get the authorities to pay attention to it. Um, we are available to the state human agents if they want to do a mass seizure and they need help. All they have to do is call us. We've not been called yet, but we're available and they know about us.
So like if we had an issue in Columbus and somebody called and said there's an animal abuse situation, whether it's horses or dogs or whatever it is, would we send him out to look at that? So let's back up. Have we ever had that?
I was just gonna say.
Well, we have some stuff going on right now.
Oh, really?
You can call abuse. So I'm just saying, if it.
I would say in that case, you should call state human agents. They work, uh, with the, uh, Animal Humane Society. They're, they're there enforcement division. Um, one of them is, I think it's Wade Struff and somebody else. I don't remember their names right offhand. But those guys do the investigations, um, and would be the ones to call. They have the authority to do them. Um, I would have the authority to do them if you gave me that authority by contract, I would be able to do it. And I wouldn't have a problem doing it. Um, but I think the sheriff's department might have a problem if we do it. So they might want to be involved instead.
I know for dog bites, they're the, they're the ones that are the authority for, you know, doing dangerous dog and, and dog bites.
So do you go get a bad, evil possessed dog yourself? You do, huh?
Oh, yeah.
Hear that, Bill?
Evil possessed dog.
I don't have any dogs right now.
No, down the street you used to though.
I will bring them. And a pound of hamburger.
Sounds like you've done that before.
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, Elizabeth, what would be the next step?
Well, the next step is, at our organizational meeting, we did not designate an animal control, um, service. And we said that we would look into what services were available. And right now, this is the service that's available as our, um, current service with Hillcrest does expire February 28th.
Yeah, well, I'm comfortable. Are you guys comfortable?
Sure.
Go move forward. Does someone want to make a motion to that effect? Should we make a motion to?
Are you going to make a motion for impound with pickup on demand service?
I would think so. I would think so.
That's going to save your CSO time.
Yeah.
Let them do other things out here if they're giving that cat thing. Um, we'll take care of your animal. Just dogs though, right? You want cats or dogs?
I don't think we have much with cats, do we?
I don't like cats.
Me either. Oops. There goes a bunch of votes. Okay, uh, someone want to make a motion to? Do, do we have a contract to, to get first or maybe we should get a contract and then?
I think it's in the draft. But, uh.
Is that on a, uh, a six is the draft?
I have, on nine and 10 is the, is the services and rates. I don't, I was just gonna say, I think that's all you gave me, but certainly, um, if you want to forward a contract, you know, we can take a look at it and then, um, I'll put it on the consent agenda for the next.
Yeah, why don't you do that?
If you do that, that's what you, you.
Okay.
No, sounds good.
Anything else?
That's it. Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, planning commission report.
Jake is going to be taking the planning commission report tonight.
He's going to bring back a contract.
We're going to move the motion. What?
Nothing. We got it settled.
Okay, what's that, Elizabeth?
Um, Jake is going to be taking the planning commission report tonight.
Oh, you, really?
You do that all on your own?
Mayor, council, uh, we've got three motions from the January 24th city council meeting. These are for the Batumus roadways applications and the sanctuary, sanctuary at Howard Lake variances. So these are just to formalize the approval. Uh, the first two, we'll take them in order. Uh, the first two are the preliminary plat approval, which is consistent with the findings of fact and recommended conditions of approval, is accepted by the council in the staff report, just in a resolution format. And the second resolution is consistent with those findings of fact in the staff report. Also includes several findings of fact that, uh, were taken from the findings of fact and conclusion of law from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. When the agency declined, uh, or rejected the petition for an EAW. And it includes the conditions of approval, uh, approved by the city council.
So we're going to make two resolution?
Correct. There's two resolutions, so two motions.
Two motions.
Uh, the first would be for the plat and the second would be for the CUP insight plan.
Jesse, what?
1801.
1801 and 1802, I guess. I like all that. I like to make a motion, accept a resolution, 1801. Okay?
Any, uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Comments? Concerns?
The resolution is?
1801.
First one here?
Yep, the first one. That's the plat.
The plat was the consolidation of the two lots together.
Okay. No comments? Uh, call for a vote. Home favorites, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Three to one. Okay. Next up, we have the CUP. Someone want to make a motion to approve or deny?
Make a motion to approve resolution, 1802.
Second.
Okay, further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to bring to your attention, there was, um, several emails that we received during the week, um, regarding the fire hydrant. So I just wanted to make a clarification on the record that, to the best of my knowledge, from your discussion, the council's discussion, and reading the resolutions, I did not see anywhere that a fire hydrant was going to be required on the site today. Eventually, there will be a fire hydrant in the vicinity of Batumus roadways, but it, in the resolution today, that's not a requirement.
Correct.
Was that your intention?
That was my intention, that once the water is extended, there would be a hydrant there so that the fire could be.
The existing fire hydrant is on the north side of the bridge.
Right.
It is.
And they should be able to drop lines from that fire hydrant? Dan?
Oh, thanks. Our vehicle.
Well, it's across the bridge.
Yeah. So eventually, that water in the sewer is going to get put in place. I think, um, talking with Al Newman, the fire chief, he was, he was concerned that, you know, that eventually they would like to see, um, um, a hydrant near the entrance. But whether it's, obviously, we can't do it before the water's extended. But I just wanted to make sure that once the water was extended, there was a hydrant there. I think that was my intention. So that can be part of the developer's agreement that.
And the developer, it is our intention to do a phasing plan and making sure that there's.
A hydrant.
A hydrant, um, at that location.
A suitable location. Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Three to one again. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, the last resolution is for the variance for the sanctuary at Howard Lake development. Once again, this just includes the findings of fact, uh, that were in the staff report and approves the variance request. And we're looking for a motion to adopt the resolution.
I'll make a motion, adopt a resolution, 1803.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, that's all you got?
That's all we got.
Mr. Planning Commission guy? All right, public open forum. Anyone here for a public open forum? Okay, here are none. Move on to Coon Creek watershed district appointment.
Coon Creek has put, uh, Columbus on notice that they have a vacancy. And the state statute says that if the city has a list of three appointees, then they would have to appoint from that list. Historically, we've not had three appointees. And so at this time, I think there's, um, an incident here where I'm informing you that there's a vacancy, but at this time, it would be no action by the council as we don't have three names to nominate.
What if we nominate one? That doesn't work?
You could, you could put a list together of one, but then they would not be required to take from that list.
Interesting. Okay. So we don't have three. Sounds like that's the deal.
We do not have three.
Okay. Okay, moving on to, uh, do we need a motion to approve their budget then, the Sunrise?
That's the Sunrise.
Yeah, do we need that tonight?
Should.
You want to do that?
I, I just attended one meeting and, and I just kind of got the tail end of the budget.
Yep.
I know much, not much about it. But I know that they want it approved by the council.
They do?
They do.
Okay. Any other information about that you can pass forward?
Say it here.
Is it the same as last year or what?
I think it's pretty, pretty.
It's pretty close.
Pretty close, pretty level.
Yeah, within, within $500, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
They got some good people on the board trying to keep it down as best as they can.
Okay, someone want to make a motion to approve the, do we approve their budget? Is that what we do?
I'll make a motion to approve the Sunrise watershed budget as in form on page eight.
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
Second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, um, next up, we have the watershed base funding representation designation. What's that, Elizabeth? That's in additions?
It is in the additions. On page 820, I just want to give you a brief outline. We were, the city was informed in January that there was $826,000 in funding available for Anoka County. And this funding was, um, given to them through the state system. And the dollars are from the Clean Water Fund. And what they did was, they are presenting each county with a grant of that amount, but it can only be used for certain projects. And the idea is you would work collaboratively with all of Anoka County cities. And so there was a meeting on January 31st where all cities were invited and collaboratively, they came up with plans on what they could spend the money on. And the idea from that is that you collaborate, you come up with some good projects that need to be funded, and everyone has to agree on them. They did this, uh, program, um, because it's a Board of Soil and Water Resources are in charge of this money and program. Apparently, in other counties, it didn't work as well as Anoka County. Um, I didn't have an opportunity to, to attend, but Leon attended and he worked with a table or two and, and, um, they were told that they worked very well together. So they have a, a timeframe, and the timeframe is that they have to make decisions by June 30th for this funding, otherwise it goes back to the, um, pool, state pool. And so they wanted a resolution to designate a person and an alternate to make decisions on behalf of the city on how this funding was going to be used. Or for what projects that meet the criteria that it would be used for. So on page 821, I put a resolution together and I, um, I have myself as the primary and Denny Peterson as the, Councilman Peterson as the secondary. As Sunrise Water Maintenance Organization has taken a lead in organizing, and so I do think they're going to have some projects that will be involved with the funding.
Okay.
However, if someone else would like to be the primary and go to the meetings, they certainly.
The alternate.
Are welcome to do that.
No, I, I'm thinking we got a good setup here, so. Okay, someone want to make a motion to, uh, to adopt this resolution? 1803.
Four, isn't it?
Oh, four.
Yeah.
Four?
Yeah.
Oh. Wow. Yeah, it would be, wouldn't it? Okay. Anyone? Anyone?
Make a motion, make a resolution to assign representative to watershed base funding work groups?
Okay.
1804.
All right, do we have a second?
Yep, second.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I'm going to, I'm not, I'm not going to vote on this here because my name's on the, I don't, I don't feel right.
That matters, does it?
But I don't know if it does or not, and I don't have time to.
Jake, that don't matter, does it?
It's your prerogative if you feel you're conflicted out. I don't think there's a conflict of interest though. I don't think you have.
You don't make any money on it.
That's true.
Benefit.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, engineers report. Dennis?
Uh, the first item was an update and then a question on the Anoka County, um, 54 project.
It's a lot simpler now, isn't it?
That's the latest alignment and layout. Um, I've been attending county PMT meeting, project manager meetings for quite some time on this project. So, um, based on the latest alignment and some input from the city, that, um, we do have a three-quarter range at the point here in the middle. The future development on the east side. And the coloring is, um, the purple is actually what the design built. And the coloring is, the purple is actually what the design built, I-35 project was going to do, up to that purple and green here and here. And it was shaded green and yellow because they were trying to build the green part in 2018.
Uh-huh.
This is all going to be in 2019 now, based on the latest schedule and permitting and funding, so...
I'd hate to be the guy that owns all this land. He's got no way to get there.
That's us.
Oh, that's right. I was being funny, you know?
It's all wetland except for, no, it's a...
Mm-hmm, we're going to talk about that.
And so I just wanted to provide an update on the layout again. Latest schedule, all will be done in 19, so there'll be temporary phasing when they build the road. There'll be some 54 railroads that come up just along the north edge here, so it'll keep one lane open in each direction while we're building the roundabout. And then as they build the new leg, there'll be a couple week period where they tie in down here for existing, for existing and the new, so they'll have to keep for traffic probably around 1:40 seven or for a week or two. They'll have a new T connection here, and then the roads currently that connects to the lake drive will be cut off. To maintain access to Holiday, this driver would remain in place, and two access points on Lake would remain in place. Other, next thing, Holiday, if you want to go west, you have to come down and back to the roundabout at this point. It will be, 2019 will be an interesting year, because if it's not a build project going out, they'll be using this. The front of the road, they'll have the off ramp from 35 using this, they'll have 34 still in place, and they'll have bypass lanes, so it'll be quite a coordination effort. It's going.
I'm assuming they're going to correct that road when they do this whole big old boil, you know? I was down there a couple weekends ago, and it's fallen apart.
Yeah, they'll have to improve that when they make that the off temporary off ramp. So, you know, general, that's the layout. With the new alignment, there is not a designated trail, so I just wanted to bring that up to the council or ask if that was an issue. There's no, before it was a separated trail that went onto the shoulder, so now it's just, it's going to be a curve and gutter, but in a median, but just travel lane and paved shoulder, no official trail. So, that was a, mainly primarily a city cost that... The maneuvers.
Why is it shoulder going to be?
I think it's what EP, when you go up, you kind of see the bluer, the blue color on here. There's some, there's places where there's turn lanes that that phases down to nothing.
There should be a problem. So the blue lane, that the blue is the eight-foot shoulder? So, I don't know if it's time to talk yet, but you're... I, the gentleman that owns this property just to the, I don't have a point, and Jeff took it.
Oh, the battery fell out.
Here, Bill, use this one. Good job, Dave. So, thanks, Jeff.
Yeah.
This here, this is highland, if I remember right. This is bushes right here. This pond, okay, so the gentleman that owns this property came into my office this week. This, this pond here, why can't this be here or inside of here? Why is it, I mean, what if this piece, you say, you're saying all of this is wetlands in here, Dennis?
Yeah.
This whole thing?
Sorry to see on the screen, but there's a line, basically, there's here, everything north and west of that is wetland.
Okay, so right here, this is all high, though, right?
This, this little area down here is high.
And this is high?
Yes.
So why would we be letting them stick a pond in a piece of highland that could possibly maybe one day be connected to this piece? We've got a spot here and a spot inside this...
Yeah, this is, there's some water up here, too. These are the small areas, and it's hard to get a pond big enough with the city utilities that are in the west here, where you drive.
I understand.
The building place, from my understanding, they put a pond that isn't in the groundwater, so you have to have it, you have to have it above.
I know, but whatever. It's just like, every time we try and do something, we can't drain anything in anything that's marginal wetlands. It gets a little bit frustrating. And this is high. This is, this is an expensive piece of property here. It's not...
Well, it's really useless because you can't get there.
Well, you get here by here.
How?
This, this piece of property here is a driveway right here, Dave. So what he said was, is once this all takes place and we get going, he would be interested in purchasing, purchasing this, however, now we've got a pond in the middle of it, so...
We could, we could approach the county and just try to get it moved up to this area?
But now, okay, so is this, we talked about a roundabout here, so if, if this roundabout ever was to come to fruition, now there's a pond in the middle of it, and this piece of property here, this, this isn't all wetlands here, is it?
It is.
I mean, they were going to run the road right straight through here.
Yeah, do wetland...
Yeah.
Oh, they were, okay. They had a bunch of delineation.
No, yeah, but the thing is, is Bill, we're taking, this is all highland right here, right?
Yep.
We're burning up our highland, and we're selling it to them at a discount, right? And, and then all it does is shrink this, my pointer died, all it does is shrink that into being less and less valuable. This road belongs in the swamp.
I know it does. You and I will never argue about that, but I'm just saying, now we're adding, we got all this swamp, now we're adding another pond here to a piece of highland, that possibly, he was saying, this could be tore down and made into a, you know, one big whatever. And then the other question was, is the driveways here, you got a big curve here, okay? Is this still going to be 55 miles an hour through there? No?
No, that's 40.
Okay.
They're lowering it.
All right. This is another concern, so, I mean, everything's coming together, it's just, every, I fight about these every time they come up with this stuff.
Yeah, so we...
It's insane, so...
You know, a little bit off this, this map, there's a, there's still going to be a shallow pond in the corner here, and a bigger pond just off the map here. That's the biggest one of those project, they're purchasing that pond, so there's three of them.
I just want to make clear that it's not Anoka County that's putting ponds there. They're trying to meet the requirements of Rice Creek and Army Farm Engineers, so it's beyond Anoka County, you know, because Rice Creek sits in the meetings and tells them all the rules, and then they have to figure out how to meet all of those rules.
And I understand this, however, none of these wetlands are critical habitat in the middle of a highway intersection down there, they're just not. I mean, it's not like it's Carlos Avery or anything. This is, this is whatever. I'm just saying, where this pond is, is this is an expensive piece of property. This is worth nothing anymore now, you know? So, whatever. I still think you could stick a sliver of it in here and another sliver of it in here.
Well, thinking forward, when this property, these properties develop, they're going to need additional ponding.
Right, so why wouldn't we try and make one big pond like we're talking on, you know, like we're talking on the other side to, to do this whole deal and eliminate this pond?
Yeah, it's, again, hard to see under, there's still wetland, some wetland areas right up in here.
Great place to drain the water into.
You can't do that.
But that's not going to be drained, too. Well, I agree with you, I mean, it's frustrating.
So it's just, it's road to stone, it's over?
For the most part, maybe we could tweak it a little bit.
Yeah.
I mean, everything else looks great, you know? We wanted a roundabout, we didn't get that. And then the other thing is, okay, so the funding, did the funding ever come through?
Yes and no.
Well, that, the commissioner made a decision and saying that he was going to allow them to move forward, provided they went to the legislature and got clarification language. And so there's a contingency, so they are running a risk with the design money and the right away application money. If the legislature does not pass the money, so then they will not get the money back. But there, he's allowing them to move forward because not LRP funds, you can't spend them and get reimbursed before you get the money. He's allowing them to pre-spend it before they have the money and the clarification. So it was a little, a little bit, but it's not all clarified yet because we haven't really...
So two years of us going down there and talking to everybody, and then they messed it all up in the head.
Somehow the language, you know, the word make, somehow the word make got in there in that construction design and right away...
Dennis, if this, if I went up and I said, you know what, I'm going to buy this and fill it, now I want to get, how am I going to get access to it? What would happen?
We have to go back to the county board, probably a three-quarter, where you write in and write out.
And then whoever develops that would be paying for all that rework.
Yeah, it was, whatever, just getting the three-quarter on the east side. They prefer to let development decide where access wants to come and do write-in, write-out. But it's weird negotiating a three-quarter access there in the middle to the east side.
Yeah, I'm not happy with it at all, so I think it's a horrible thing.
I know they meant with, so they didn't see any future connection to the west side that they were desiring. That's why they put the T intersection down this way. So that's the, that's the way to move forward at this time.
Okay.
More to try to minimize or maximize the use of the high ground.
Yeah, it's just that one corner right there. I mean, like I said, he, he expressed interest in buying that one, because of the highland just tied in, so that's why he's saying, so, I'd send my piece.
What if the, what if the wetland went to the back of the property, which is less likely to be used? If you put that map back up there real quick? What if you put it back, is there any highland back in here to do it in? It's hard to tell from your map. I mean, wouldn't you want to put it as far back as you can?
Yeah, the, the wetland boundary is, is right about here. So we've got this small, this is a small wedge of property, a little piece of there. They're locating the pond, so the road, 54 drains to it at a certain elevation, and that has to outlet into the wetland, so there's...
Oh, so you wouldn't have enough, you got to be near the road. Okay. All right, thanks.
The next update was on the bridge project, the 97 project. Start with the aesthetics. This is what the bridge will look like. The coloring is, it's not quite that dark or greenish, it's more brownish, but that's the way that paper came on. Just wanted to show that, there's a couple items. One, the word Columbus that we got, been out for putting on there. The bridge will have a joint right in the middle, about the middle here, so they were wondering if we wanted Columbus to stay in the middle or on the side. We had told them, preferred in the middle, maybe just space the letters out a little wider, there will be a joint between like the U and the L.
That'd be fine.
And then use all capital letters. Figure the better.
Figure the better.
Okay. And then the other change was, they are going to now have streetlights. Before, they were just going to have the center, you know, the sidewalks down the middle, they were going to have LED lighting, but they're going to have actual streetlights and...
Throughout, the whole, through the whole diverging diamond, or just two?
Through the diverging diamond, before they weren't necessarily going to have them on the bridge, on the outside.
Oh.
Now they are, and so you don't really need those LEDs, which would be the city's maintenance anyway.
Right. We don't have to maintain these?
I'm not sure about the...
I think they're writing a service agreement with it, just like with the traffic light, but we told them to eliminate the LEDs because that is, we would have to replace them and maintain them along the center, so we eliminated those lights.
So those are two of the aesthetic items on the bridge itself. Talked about the signal that we got is now approved, even though warrants, and warrants aren't in that today, but they will do that from the element, so that's a little bit of a change. Their normal policy, which is within the city, I kind of sketched in, just purely by hand, what the interchange could look like. And so this is on the east side, this is existing horns beyond the south, and existing horns beyond the north. So on the Hornsby real line, it'll come down here. The yellow is what, just planned, what designed, built, and planned to change. The yellow is what the design build project was going to build, and they were going to stop right on the west side of Hornsby. With a signal coming in, they want to add another through lane, so there's two through lanes going east, which, you know, matches the diverging diamond traffic, and there'd be a right turn lane south and a left turn lane northbound on eastbound. So likewise, on Hornsby coming south, there'd probably be a left, a through, and a right. We have to look at the right-way intersection. And during the discussion in this through lane ratio, what the changes would be with the signal, they want to add another through lane and another right turn lane. Question yet is, will the signal be part of the design build project or part of the Hornsby Street real line? That's still being determined. There should be enough funding with LRP money for Hornsby, and just some of that cooperative agreement grant money that we had on 97, we can use that for the signal. And they're administering the Hornsby Street project now because it's LRP funds, and they have an RRP out right now for consultant selection to design Hornsby. And again, it's yet to be determined which project the signal will go with. Again, that's a 19 project, and most of the work on 97 is 19. So the bridge, the north half of the bridge will be done this year, and then the 19 traffic will be moved to the new side, and they'll re-destruct the existing part of the bridge, so both sides, 2019.
So that's still going to be a, no right turn on red going north, getting off northbound on 35?
Down here.
Right here.
I'm not sure what the, what their...
I heard it was one year for sure, no turn on red.
I'm not sure. Check it out. We're also working with, and on the drainage piece for all the intersections, so again, this is map, I'm not going to verify that it's current, but there's ponding down on the city property that we had moved from the north side to the south side, and with potential development coming in, we're working with them to maximize, minimize the ponding here, but maximize the use of the pond, so it's not just for mid-deaths project, maybe we can combine it with development. This just shows some drainage areas. Probably a lot of people don't know that a lot of this area on the north side of 97 actually drains into the dish, through a hole, and ends up in the south side, into the area of the border. So we have to maintain those drainage patterns when we're all done. And...
Okay.
That was it.
All right, thank you. Right, attorney's report?
No report.
The planning commission report? No report. Counsel report, Denny?
Nothing.
Bill?
No, I don't have anything, Danny.
Jeffrey?
Cable Commission met.
Why do I always go last? I always go last, you ever notice? It says mayor and council, but yet I always go last.
You want to go right out?
No.
All right. Cable Commission met. We looked over the sound system in here again. I got a bit of 103,000, so that was a little high, so we're, that's Attorney Brothers, so we're looking at that again.
Wow.
Yeah, that's what we said, so, let's see, Personnel Committee, or Cable Commission has a personnel. We went over that again, and we're done with that. Policy, personnel policy. That's all I got.
Okay. I don't have anything. Public Works Report. JW, what do you got? Nothing? Okay. Public Information Coordinator?
No.
No report. Okay. City Administrator, looks like all your stuff's crossed off, huh?
All my, all my items are crossed off. I have a couple announcements for the meeting, so if we can turn to the calendar page.
Okay.
Tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM, we have the second town plan, which, a meeting which is for the residential forum, and also does have a presentation and then a small worksheet for those who attend that meeting. I did contact Forest Lake, and the Forest Lake City Council is available to meet with Columbus on the 27th at 6:30. I told them that I would confirm with all of you to see if that is a good opportunity to, to meet with them.
We just meet over there, they got a big room. Just meet over there.
Makes sense.
In their big, huge building, the palace?
Big, beautiful building.
27th's good for me.
At 6:30?
Yep.
Okay.
That's a Tuesday?
It is a Tu, it is a Tuesday.
There goes racquetball. Okay.
And bingo.
On the 21st, on the Planning Commission meeting, we had a meeting with the Forest, or the Freeway District, and as I was leaving that night, I realized that some of the corporations weren't present at that meeting, and so Holiday, Gander Mountain, Westmore, Ziegler, and who did I miss? Gander Mountain, maybe. Anyway, there's five of them. And so Jesse called them to ask them, see if they wanted to come to the meeting on the 21st, which would be a Planning Commission meeting, to see if they wanted to kind of talk with the Planning Commission about how they see, or what they see in the future for the Freeway District from a, kind of a corporate different perspective. Most of their headquarters are in Bloomington at this point, so this is kind of a, a different location for them, but we wanted them to also have an opportunity to speak on how they feel the Freeway District should be in the future. So depending on the outcome of that on the 21st, that will be on the Planning Commission agenda.
Okay.
So we will have a meeting, Planning Commission meeting on the 21st, and I have an application for March 7th. With that, I have nothing further.
So you have this job description in here?
A job description? Is that what you're asking me?
Yeah, you have a job description, thanks.
The job descriptions are the consent agenda.
Okay.
Those you want to talk about.
All right. Okay. All right, Planning Commission next week, want to talk about them?
If we can, just for me.
Sure, let's do it.
We got three openings, or what are we, what are we doing here? I see three, three different titles.
There are currently three openings that we have. The accountant position has been open for quite some time.
That's not one of these three.
It is not, that was from the previous week. Karen Bowlin gave me her resignation, so she'll no longer be doing the Planning Commission. Secretary... And the third one is the, is the new position that we have for administrative technician to help us out in the office with building permits and the scanning piece that we are going to put in place and a few other items that need to be moved from the accounting to the new position.
Administrative assistant?
I think I just, I went back and forth whether I should call it administrative assistant or administrative technician because there's a lot of permit work, so I ended up with administrative technician.
So the two are the same.
But they're the same, yes.
Okay. All right. Anyhow, here, motion adjourned?
Move.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We adjourn.